And good evening, everyone, and welcome to our second edition of our city council Zoom meeting for April 27th, 2020. And we're gonna talk about the, what meetings we're gonna have in the future later throughout this meeting as to how we're gonna handle our future meetings. For tonight, we will remain fully remote, and we will begin with tonight's meeting in a remote fashion, as we do for all of our meetings, with an invocation and followed by a pledge. And Brian is gonna have a flag for us to pop up on our screen for. So begin with the invocation, and Barry, I have your name down here. Can you help us with that tonight?
Yes, sir. I've got it ready. Y'all, if you'll bow your heads and pray with me. God, please continue to guide, comfort, and strengthen us as we go throughout this devastating pandemic. Please be with our citizens who are anxious and afraid, be with our businesses and employees facing uncertain futures, protect our elderly and our vulnerable citizens, those who are in need. Help us to choose kindness and love over fear and anger. Help our hearts to reflect your love to those around us. Thank you for your goodness and your gifts in the midst of the storm. We love you, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Barry. And so we'll begin with our pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
With liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. Not so bad. All, and we'll begin tonight's meeting with a roll call. And Melody, if you can help us out.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualney? He's not here. Okay, Mr. Thames?
Oh, he is here.
There we go.
Okay, so I'm sorry. Mr. Gualney's here?
Yes.
Mr. Thames?
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton? Is Mr. Wolverton here?
He was here a minute ago.
Anybody seen my boy Ralph around here?
Wolverton did this last time. He was absent for roll call and then popped up. We'll come back to him. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wyatt?
Here.
Ms. Andreas?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
President Wright?
Here.
And how about Wolverton?
I'm back. I don't know why it kicked me off, but I'm here.
Okay, good. Okay, everybody's here. You have a gourm.
Thank you, Melody. Andrew, and we got everyone here. We do have a very brief agenda, famous last word, but that's what it looks like on paper. We'll begin our first time tonight entertaining a motion to approve the minutes, or defencing the reading of the minutes from April 13, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
That was, who moved for that?
That was Andy Gualney.
Oh, sorry. And Barry Smith, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so that's gonna be 11-0 vote approval of the minutes from April 13, 2020. Ward vacancies and appointments, just to bring everyone up to date. We actually have three board vacancies going on right now. We have the Board of Education for Ward 5 that expires on May 1st. And to my ward members and Ward 5, we don't have the applications yet. I know I did run into applying, and so Jennifer, John, one of you all can make sure at least that gets done, and certainly we'll consider any other applicants, but that definitely.
Peter, I missed what you said. You ran into somebody. Who did you say?
Judy Truitt, our board member.
Okay. And I wondered if we needed to maybe somehow get that out again. Not that Jennifer doesn't get a lot out very well. Do we have, should we send that out again? Did that do on Friday, Jennifer?
Yeah, I can do that. I will tell you, I also shot Judy an email. She had messaged me at the beginning when I put it out, a couple, when we first opened it, to say she was gonna reapply. And I shot her a reminder today, but John, I can do that tomorrow. I sure will.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jennifer. We also have opening for the library board. And Melody, I'm sorry, do you know which, which ward that's for, or is that at law?
It's Ward 4. It's Barry Copeland moved. It's Ward 4.
All right, so Ward 4, that one expires May 1st, and I believe we do not have applicants for that one yet either, for you people.
The only application I've got so far is the one I sent y'all today for the park board.
Park board. And I'm, and which ward was that for?
Ward 1.
All right, I heard too. What ward was it, Melody?
I thought it was Ward 1. Let's see.
Ward 1. We have one applicant at this time.
Ward 1.
Okay, so we got one applicant. Again, all those three, those expire May 1st, and that's what we have.
And President Wright, I need to ask, I should have, I should have asked Ms. Smith earlier, but I didn't look after we spoke. Michelle, I have a couple of them that, according to our book, expires right now, like April and May on the Historic Preservation Society.
Yeah.
I have down that, like, William Womack expires May of 2020.
Yeah.
And I have even Susan Zuber and Callan Childs.
Yes, but all three of them do expire, and Susan has decided not to seek another term, so we're gonna have to open up her, her spot. I know that Callan wants to continue serving and for Ward 1. And Will, we're gonna have to figure out Will, because he wants to continue to serve, but he's going on a sabbatical, and he's gonna be in Europe or Japan or somewhere far away in the fall. So we just need to figure out if there's a way that we can keep him and let him do like Skype or, you know, like Zoom meetings or something when they have their meetings, if we can make that work with the things. But yes, all three of them are expiring.
Do you wanna open those tonight and leave them open? Probably, I get, maybe even beyond May 1st, it's weird, and it's not opening these, or what do you wanna?
Well, I think, I think if I'm not wrong, I think Susan and Will don't expire until the end of May.
I had Susan in April, but that could be wrong. I had April 2020 and Callan Childs.
Yeah, I think, you're right. I think Callan and Susan are April, and I think Will's not until May. So I guess we could go ahead and open up the Ward 4 and the Ward 1 spots on the Historic Preservation, and the Historic Preservation Commission, and then I'll let Callan know, because I know she wanted to, she wanted to continue to serve.
Okay. President Wright, you wanna leave that open till when?
How about June 1st? Okay.
Yeah, that, that works for me, Peter.
All right, so we'll leave Ward, we'll open Ward 1 and Ward 4 for Historical Preservation Board applicants through up to June 1.
Okay, Gene the First at 4:30, it'll close. We'll, we'll post that in openings.
Ms. Seltzer, how long are those terms?
Let's see.
Each board has, each board has a different term. I'll have to look it up.
No worries. I can look it up, too.
This is, this is one of the ones that they, we paid a consultant to, the mayor gets an appointment on, and some are four years, some are five years, but I'll look it up here and let you know as soon as I find the page.
No worries.
All right, we'll open those up to June 1. And that's gonna get us starting with our agenda for tonight. We do actually have one item to add to our agenda. To other new business, it's gonna be item number 11-04-20, request to authorize the mayor to execute a customer service order with Spectrum for services for 310 West Valley Avenue. This is coming to us from Captain Ben Sutton with our police department. Again, we'll take that up as part of our other new business agenda tonight. And so with that one addition, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended.
Tom, Melody?
By.
Second.
Second.
And, and a second by Mr. Thames. I saw both of you over there.
What'd you say, Harden and Thames?
Harden and Thames.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so agenda, the amended agenda is approved for tonight. All right, so we're gonna go into our consent agenda, where we do have three items under our consent agenda. And just want to, those, we're not gonna take them up, obviously, as part of our, all of these items are being carried over, because they're public hearing and zoning issues, which we have talked about in our prior meetings. All of these are gonna, there's a public hearing on the 1619 Ochsmer Road property. Actually, that public hearing has been closed, but that item has been carried over until our March, excuse me, our May 11th, according to the meeting. We also have a 081019 public hearing for vacant land at 904 Highland Road and 909 Irving Road. That's gonna be continued until May 11th, 2020. And lastly, 120320, which is a public hearing for consideration of rezoned property at 2927 Central Avenue. That's gonna be, that public hearing will be continued until May 11th, 2020 as well. And so with that, those items all being carried over as part of our consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to
Move to approve.
Walter?
Second.
Barry?
A second by Mr. Thames. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so the agenda is approved as well. Just to speak to this probably a little bit in the middle of the meeting, and we'll talk, we are gonna set committee meetings for next month. We don't know exactly yet how we're gonna handle the committee meetings. They're gonna be spread out with Zoom capabilities for the public, or whether we're still gonna be fully Zoomed. I expect we're gonna be getting together next month. And so, but I don't think we're gonna be able to make that decision today, because we're waiting on the governor's order tomorrow, and sort of to get that formalized and get the directives from the state. And then we will work off of that as to what we're going to be able to accomplish, and the best way to accomplish, and I'll be communicating with all of you all. But I anticipate, we're gonna have our committee meetings and our council meetings next month, and I anticipate, we're gonna try and get together. But let's wait on the governor's order, and we'll be talking about that amongst you all this week, and certainly we'll let the public know as well. So I want you to know that, since we're carrying over all these public hearings for next month, which we certainly do hope to get to. All right, going into old business agenda, 050320, request for continuation of reimbursement for pump rental and property repair costs related to flooding at 2832 Linden Avenue, coming to us from Mark and Darby Westfall and Hummingbird Properties, and also through Mr. Pugh and Mr. Cobb. And a report on this from Finance with a 5A recommendation for reimbursing up to 6,000 of actual expenses to be paid from small infrastructure. I know we had discussion about this last meeting, as to where we stand on this. I don't know, I'm gonna open, ask first of all, is Mr. Cobb with us by any chance?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right, Greg, this came up last meeting, and if you can, one of the, I think, one of the big questions among council members is, yes, we have a request for reimbursement here and for the issues at hand, and we can talk more about that if necessary, but there was a fundamental question about the city's responsibility for this that was up in the air and was not determined. And I don't know if there's been any progress. Lord knows, we've all had our hands full and limitations placed upon us, but I don't know if there's been any progress towards answering those questions.
Yes, sir. I've, I've got the new pipe installed, ready to put the asphalt down. The job is all finished except for the asphalt. It is draining properly. I went over there after the last big rain early in the morning, and there was no water standing inside the, inside the fence stand area. You had some out in this parking lot, but not up against the building. There was no water standing there. So our new pipe, I, I think it's got that situation finished. I'd love to be there in the middle of a storm, but I think the last time I was a stormer is in the middle of the night. But all I know is that early in the morning, when I went over, everything was dry. I've not heard from Mr. Westfall.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Smith.
I, didn't, Jennifer, didn't you send a invoice for the cost of the pump rental? Didn't I see that come through on email?
Yes, it's for $57.44 and .32, and I have not heard back from him since he sent this invoice either. I think Greg has been to the site since that invoice was sent.
Hey, Greg Cobb. Greg Cobb would, go ahead. Go ahead, Greg.
Go ahead, Greg.
Okay, I didn't mean to talk over you. I'm sorry. But I've been there every time it's rained. It looks like everything is working. I don't know in a heavy storm for sure. I'd love to be there in a, in a really heavy storm. Like, the storms we had in February and a few weeks back were way out of normal. But from right now, everything I can see is draining well.
Okay, so you think that the problem was the blocking of the pipe, and that, in a sense, you could almost say we had the liability to, that we ought to pay him because someone wrecked up that, that pipe?
The first storm, the very first time it flooded, the tail ditch on his property was not completely dug out. He went over there and did some extra digging to help drain it. So I'm not gonna say it's 100% us, but the problem was it wasn't draining from whoever blocked the pipe. And I've dug and dug and dug, can't get the truth of that one yet. But whoever blocked the pipe years ago actually started the problem. It flooded, he dug out the ditch a little bit more, and that's how we found out that the pipe was blocked. Now that he's finished his tail ditch, and we have a new pipe, I don't have reason to believe it's gonna flood again, but I wanna verify that. I mean, every time it storms, if it's not in the middle of the night, I'll get in the truck and go over there. That's just, I mean, it's half a mile from my house. It's not a problem.
So with that said, Greg, what, if I can put you on the spot a little bit, what is your recommendation with regard to determination of any city responsibility for this and/or if we're in a position to even make that determination now?
Well, I, I think that we're both a little bit involved in the city's storm drain was blocked by somebody without our authorization. We don't know who. And he needs to do a little work on his tail ditch, too. So we are responsible in a sense. If he had his tail ditch in there in the beginning, it still couldn't have gone anywhere. I don't understand how all these years it hasn't flooded ever rained. That's what's really got my mind boggled, is why hasn't it flooded every time it's rained over the last 20 years? And I've been here, coming up on 22 years, and I've never known who blocked that dead gum pipe, didn't know it was there.
Okay.
But anyway, we got, we got a new system in. We, we've done everything the city can do to fix it.
All right, so the problem has, and I know we'll continue to check on it, the problem has hopefully been fixed. All right, so.
Yes, sir. The, the city has gone, we put $48,000 over there, almost, almost 49. I mean, we went in there and put in a big pipe. We dug everything out. We're gonna repave it and put it all back together. I think the city has done an excellent job of making it the best we can make it.
All right, so the question is really the continuation of reimbursement for the pump rental and other costs.
Yep.
Anybody wish to speak to this?
I, I mean, I personally feel like, I, I'm not sure, I don't think we should reimburse him for any of the, the extraneous costs. I think at one point, when he came to the meeting, he mentioned cleaning, I think, cleaning, and I think his own personal kind of damages. But I do feel like we could, I think we should reimburse him for the cost of the pump, because he did run that pump, you know?
And let me read that invoice to you. This invoice includes three line items. Number one, Curtis Environmental Water Damage Cleanup. Number two, Sunbelt Rental, rental of pump for two months. Number three, charge or operating the pump for two months. The combined total requested is $57.44 and .32.
Okay, I'd like to add that I went over there one night at 11 o'clock, I believe it's Sunday, a couple of weeks ago. My wife thought I was nuts, but it was storming, and I got in the truck at 11 o'clock and went over and stood there and talked to him while he was running the pump. He did, he did do what he said.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I pulled up, and then he looked at me like, where in the world you come from? It's even 10:37. I don't know, it was late at night. It was raining.
Can you detail the cost in those lines?
Yeah, I can, Andy.
I don't know if I heard it.
I've got it pulled up, if you want.
Do you want me to, do you want me to repeat what I said? Or I can actually go further into detail for each of the one. It was Curtis Environmental for Water Damage Cleanup, and that included extracting the water, removing the baseboards, drying the equipment, setting drying equipment, set sandbags to temporary, stop flooding, temporary sump pump to pump water out of the back courtyard caused by the city's storm drain, water obstructed. Second one is water extraction and drying, water pump rental, reroute Homewood City Sewer Water from overflowing drain to open drain to prevent flooding.
What's the call?
What are the calls for those individual?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right. The first invoice was for $37.50, water extraction and drying. That was $37.50. The water pump rental was $12.74 and .32, and the pump operation to reroute Homewood City Sewer Water from overflowing drain to open drain was $720. Now, I will say that he has himself listed as the activity for that one. That's $720. So Mark, what, he's got Curtis Environmental for Water Extraction and Drying. He's got Sunbelt Rentals for Water Pump Rental, and then he's got himself listed as pump operation to reroute Homewood City Sewer Water from overflowing drain to open drain to prevent flooding.
I mean, I personally, this is Barry, would feel comfortable with the latter two. I, I don't feel like we should pay to, pay for the, the group that came in to do the water remediation inside his business. But I do, I feel okay about, like, like Greg said, he was clearly there on the property in the middle of the storm at 11 o'clock at night running the pump. So I don't, I don't, I don't have any problem reimbursing him for the actual rental cost of $12.74, $32, or whatever that was, or the actual physically being on site to run the pump. I'm not sure we should be paying to repair the inside of the building.
Let me go, let me, let me go a little bit into that invoice for $37.50, okay? So it was more, it was more than just, it was extracting water, removing the baseboards, set the drying equipment, but also setting sandbags and this temporary sump pump, three times to pump water out of the back courtyard. So I will say there's a little bit more in there than just repairing.
Yeah.
The courtyard isn't where we were hearing that it was backed up, though, is it?
Yeah, it was going from, into their back, from that back courtyard. That, I mean, he's, that's his backyard is what he's calling that, the courtyard.
Yeah, his courtyard is also, with Greg, illustrated did not have the correct fall. It was sloping into his property.
Right.
After his last renovation.
Hey, Jennifer, I do have another quick question. On the, on the Sunbelt Rentals receipt, there's a charged amount of $311.95 on February 19th. There's $325.21 on February 28th, and then an additional $637.16 on April 14th, which would have been just since our last meeting.
Yeah, you remember, we had to, we didn't make a decision on it, so he made, you know, he continued on.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out why, you know, on the 19th and the 28th, those are close in terms of amounts, but they're not the exact same amount. So I'm not sure how they just determine the rental length. And then the last one, that third line item is, you know, basically double what either of the other ones are.
I don't know the answer to that. I just had voices. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, please, Mr. Cobb.
Or I guess it's just a general question. I'm just floating out there. So it's just my perspective. It seems to me if we have, we went out, we addressed the problem, Mr. Cobb has stated that it was no longer a serious problem as an apparent consequence of us addressing the problem, and we're willing to reimburse him for taking steps himself to address the problem. I'm not, I'm not, I guess I'm hard to understand why we wouldn't be willing to pay for damages that were caused by this problem that we've tacitly acknowledged we were causing by a blocked sewer. I'm just, why would we not be willing to pay him for the damage? I'm just trying to understand that position.
Well, I, I, I mean, I'll just say, I was under the impression that we were leaning towards the first two charges and not the, as, as being actual real expenses versus his, his time operating the pump last time. But I kind of feel like Mr. Cobb was indicating that we haven't had a, at our last meeting two weeks ago, the work had not been done yet, and we haven't had one of those real big storms to confirm. I know we talked about getting some sort of signed agreement from the property owner regarding any future issues as well. That's kind of where we left off last time, but I didn't know what other people had in terms of recollection.
May I, may I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Okay, okay. Right now, it's draining fine. But the reason I would ask Mr. Kendrick about an agreement to hold us harmless is that he is connected to our system. Okay? In a major storm, it's very possible for a system to flow backwards, because if you overload the system, it gets head pressure from the waters above, and it could push water out of the pipe back onto him. But that's not our doing. They are connected to us. We allow them to connect to us. But if their connection is lower, and enough storm water comes from above, it can absolutely flow backwards. And, and I would really hope that we would have an agreement that, okay, if we pay these damages, we're done with you.
What, what, what we talked about last time was release for past damages. I'm not sure about future damages that's caused from our system?
Well, it wouldn't be caused from our system, other than that if he tapped to, he tapped to our system. We didn't tap to him.
Well, didn't we not give him a permit to do that?
Not that I'm aware of. Now, I mean, this happened, must have happened many years ago, because, you know, I've been here a while. But people tap into our system all the time. But if our system is overloaded, it, it, then they, actually built them a conduit back onto their own property.
That's true. Every, we got it, isn't it? We've got that problem anywhere.
Yes, that is, that is correct. It is. When a system is overloaded, it's just overloaded. It's just like the flooding we've gotten, three other places in the city I'm dealing with right now. The system can only take so much. It's designed for a 25-year storm, and anything above a 25-year storm, it's gonna flood.
Not to mention, I think you're highlighting something that we need to address as a whole, whether it's with you and Mr. Pugh, or someone from outside the city. But we need to address people connecting to our sewers, the impact fee they pay, if they're paying one, because what happens is, they connect to it, and then 20 years later, we're faced with a situation where we've connected everybody else and their sister or brother, and we have capacity issues, and we have zero funds collected to remediate that issue. So I think that's something that we need to address. But in this topic, do you feel like the city's 50% responsible for the issue at this guy's property, or 100% in this one particular case?
I don't think we're 100%, but we are partly responsible, because somebody messed with our system without our permission. But you're absolutely right, Mr. Gualney. What you're saying is that we allow people to connect to us. So if I take a pipe from my yard and put it down in the storm system, and the storm system overload, it's gonna flow backwards. And that's on me.
That's exactly right, because like, for example, Trinity just finished renovation, and they piped theirs down, I think, Seminole directly into our storm sewer, whereas previously, it would have shed off the roof onto the ground and would have, you know, more slowly Whereas previously, it would have shed off the roof onto the ground and would have, you know, more slowly tricked it into the sewer system, um, or storm sewer, sorry. You know, and it would less likely overwhelm it, whereas now we're focusing all of that at one point and, and, you know, driving the capacity up faster.
You're correct.
We'll work on that in public works.
Okay. I would like to say that we, we've had a, you know, another flooding item that, that came up from our property owner and by two eighty there and he, he had reported damages that I don't believe we paid for, but we've done our due diligence to try and remediate some of the cause there as well.
Where is this now?
That's, that's, he's talking about over there on, in Hollywood. That, that flooding is not ours, that's coming from.
Yeah, we haven't done any, that, that's coming from Aldott Rideway and we have not done any.
Well, I understand where it is, but, you know.
We haven't given any money.
It's not city, it's not city, it's not city water and we're not, we haven't given him any money at all.
I, I spoke, I spoke, I spoke. And I don't think we have any obligation. I spoke to him today, he's still irritated with us for not getting him in front of Aldott. Um, and I'm not sure, he's got a struggle there that's, uh, outside our jurisdiction. I tried to explain that, he doesn't understand why Wyatt can't get him a meeting with the head of Aldott or something. But we're, I've explained how hard Aldott is to deal with, but I'm gonna meet him at his property on Saturday and listen a little more.
Mr. President?
Just deal with the issue you have in front of us, please. Um, so we have, we, we have this one issue involving Linden Avenue. Um, we have questions about how much of the cost should be attributed or not. Um, we have, I'm not sure if I got an answer from Mike with regard to, we can certainly ask for release. Um, but with regard to future indemnification, I'm not exactly sure what, I mean, is, is the release probably the best thing we can do? Uh, if we make a.
We, we can discuss our liability issues for maintaining our own system, but presently, in my opinion, the release is the best thing we can do.
Alright, so if that's the best thing we can do right now, um, you know, does anybody have a motion as to which of these amounts or partial amounts, um, trying to see if we can get to a proposal, uh, that can perhaps build some consent?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I, can I just make an observation and then I guess I may have a motion?
Okay.
Um, trying to split the baby here, since there are people on both sides of this, or maybe I'm on one side and everybody's on the other, I don't know. Um, Mr. Cobb has suggested that, you know, we're at least half responsible for the problem. That's what I understood him to say a number of times, we were both responsible. If I've done my math correctly, if we took the first number, we divided in half, we added the second number to that, you come up with three thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents, is that correct? Somebody check my math on that, Melody or somebody better math than I am.
Uh, hold on a second here, sir. Get some self call.
That is not considered the seven twenty, because I agree with what Mr. Wolverton said, my understanding is, we already said we weren't gonna pay him for his sort of nebulous time and effort on his own part.
Hey, Mike, what number did you say?
I came up with thirty-one forty-nine thirty-two.
That's, yeah, that's what I got too.
Four forty-nine, correct.
So I, I'm going to make a motion that we, um, a motion that we, uh, give this gentleman, uh, Mr. West, thirty-one forty-nine, three thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents and require a release on his part to, um, release us from any further liability, or however I need to state that, I'm not the attorney here, uh, relative to this problem. And again, we're to split the baby and saying, if it's a fifty-fifty problem, we'll take responsibility for half of his cost and, on the first item. And then I can take responsibility for the other half. So that's, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Well, we have a motion for, uh, thirty-one forty-nine thirty-two and a release, um, with regard to any additional liability related to this item from the property owner and a, by Mr. Hickambottom and a second by Ms. Andrus. Any further questions or discussion?
Well, and that's coming from Small Infrastructure.
Small Infrastructure, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And that'll be coming from Small Infrastructure. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's gonna be a eleven to zero vote, uh, Melody.
Yes, sir.
Twenty dash sixty-three.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all. Um, all right, that'll get us down to our committee referral agenda, um, which we can all look at. In some shape, form or fashion next week, I will entertain a motion for approval of the committee referral agenda.
So McCloskey, second, Tames.
And a second by Mr. Tames, again, um, I wonder if that was, um, McCloskey and Tames, all in favor?
Hi, the dog's in favor too, apparently.
So that's a fifteen to zero vote. Um, eleven to zero. Um, thank you all, and that'll get us down to other new business. And next item is oh-eight oh-four twenty, which is a request to set a public hearing for variance to the signed ordinance at five hundred Shades Creek Parkway. This is coming to City Council from Sherri White and with our BEC department. And we're gonna set this for a public hearing for May eleventh, next month at six P M. We have a public hearings, um, without any objection to that.
Excuse me, Mr. Wright, I apologize, this is Mike Kendrick. Why are variances coming to us under our new sign ordinance, Greg?
I, I thought the same thing.
I'm sorry, is Mike, I messed it up, do they go to the B Z A now?
I, I don't know that variances come here unless you deny their permit.
I do. Um, I, I did, and I may have messed up. Do they go to the B Z A now? I'm just old habits, you know?
No, they don't go to the B Z A, they come to us if you deny the permit.
Yes.
Somebody gotta read that sign ordinance.
So did you?
I've been, they screwed up, but, um, if, if, I, I deny if they're, they're asking for like two signs and only one allowed, I think is the issue. Um, if they come to you, then that's, then that's.
Well, Greg, the new sign order has multiple sign opportunities for them. Uh, more than one sign. We're not on that one sign per property anymore since December.
It's, it's. Alright, well, if you would, then carry it over, I'll review it in the morning and make sure it's right, but I thought I had it right.
I'm not saying you don't, I'm, I'm just saying variances only come to the City Council under the new sign ordinance if you deny their, their request for sign administratively.
Alright, so.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so.
So that's what I see.
Alright, so Greg, is it okay to carry it over to our next council meeting, then, if you want to look at that?
That's fine, I'll, I'll, I'll double check, make sure I did it right, but I, I thought I had it right, but.
Well, I mean, you, you can sit the, the public hearing, but we just need to give.
And Peter, it's also on the, uh, it's also on the committee referral agenda, the special issues as well.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, let's, um, let's just, let's just keep it on committee referral. Um, let's don't set the public hearing yet under other new business. We'll carry that, um, and perhaps we, we can set it for public hearing for May eleventh, coming out of committee. We'll do that.
Okay. And I'll go back, look at it, make sure I got it right, but I probably did.
Mr. Wright, we have to give seven days' notice, so if you meet on Monday, that wouldn't be sufficient to give it from May eleventh.
I got you. Okay, well, I'll tell you what, we will go ahead and set the hearing for May eleventh, um.
And that gives Greg a chance tomorrow to make sure we still need to have it.
Yes, and so Greg, let us know about that and that. We can.
Hey, it's very likely that I messed up, but I will verify it in the morning.
And after hearing from you, we, we'll make the necessary adjustments, but we'll keep it in committee.
Okay.
Set for public hearing for May eleventh and wait to hear.
Mr. Kendrick, do you want me to hold off tomorrow? I mean, don't, don't, um, don't notice the public hearing?
Yeah, we have time because we just have to give seven days' notice, so.
Okay.
I mean, the, the new sign ordinance was to simply do away with all these variance requests.
Yeah, I agree.
I knew that.
That's what we're trying to.
I knew that was all too good to be true, so.
Right.
I know it's coming. Um, thanks for everyone's efforts on that sign ordinance, it's gonna be a single beauty, I know it's here. Um, oh-nine oh-four twenty, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract to continue participating in the Jefferson County Consortium for the Development Block Grant Entitlement Program, Home Investment Partners in, excuse me, Emergency Solutions Grant Programs for Programs Years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. And as I understand, each of these, these are all, um, programs that we are in right now and we are merely continuing these, is that correct, Mel?
Yes, sir. We're, we're already, we're in, we're in these programs with the Jefferson County Consortium, but they need the mayor to sign to continue for the, for operating for the next three years.
So that, that's not on a year rotating basis. Okay, alright, any questions or discussions on that?
I would move to, move to approve, Barry.
Smith, move for approval by Mrs. Smith.
I'll second. Andrus, okay.
Second, so Mrs. Smith and, uh, Mrs. Andrus, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so that's gonna be eleven to zero vote, uh, that will be resolution twenty dash sixty-four, I believe. And that's gonna get us down to our request for consideration of approval of the vouchers for the period of April eleventh, twenty twenty, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. And did our dear Ms. Smith need to do this?
She did.
Yes, she did. Yes, um, I was there this morning and it was actually a really kind of light, um, light run, so that was nice. Uh, and I had three questions, which Mr. Burgett, uh, quickly answered for me, and I would move to approve paying all the vouchers.
Second.
Alright, a motion for approval from Mrs. Smith and a second from Mr. Harden, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, and that's gonna pass eleven to zero, that'll be resolution twenty dash sixty-five.
Ms. Smith, that's because the mayor has us on not, all non-essential spending.
That's right. Well, I appreciate, I personally appreciated it.
Yes, non-essential spending, no. I mean, if you don't have to have it, you don't get it right now.
Alright, well, that's gonna bring us to our next item, eleven oh-four twenty. Request to authorize the mayor to execute a customer service order with Spectrum for services for three team, West Valley Avenue, coming to us from Captain Ben Sutton, our police department, and, um, Mel, maybe.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if anybody from police is on, but, um, what, what this is, is a three-year contract with Spectrum for the new public safety building. They have Spectrum at the old building. Um, it's gonna be twenty-five hundred dollars and then run the cable that they're gonna pay out of the, um, construction warrant money. And then it's like a monthly charge of four hundred something dollars a month for a thirty-six month contract. They already have it with, at the old place, but, um, at the West Precinct and in, in the jail, and this is just gonna be, um, to have it at, at the new building.
Alright, well, that's, that's getting pretty exciting. I mean, we're getting, getting over there by far within Spectrum, so.
And it's, it's budgeted, um, uh, it, it's gonna be split partly between the correction jail uh, and correction court and the general fund, because it's gonna be for cable services and internet services that service all, all that part of the building. So it'll be split between general fund and those two, and it is budgeted.
So once we, once we, we turn on Spectrum, we can't turn back on this project, so. And I'll attend a motion for approval.
So move, Hickambottom.
Second, McCloskey.
Second by Mr. McCloskey, any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And is, is Mr. Broadhead on, is anyone on that can, um, just a little bit out of here, can update us on how that's going out there? I don't know.
Brandon said he got kicked off, but he said he, he just told me he got kicked back down, Brandon, are you, are you on?
Yeah, he's on, and he's unmuted.
Oh, he's muted, yeah.
He wasn't.
That was his, that was his.
He's on here. Can you hear me?
Brandon?
Hey, Brandon, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Ooh.
He's got a bad accent.
We can get that louder.
Brandon, we're gonna cut off your fifteen seconds of fame.
How about now?
A little better now, a little better. Um, I'm just wondering if you, just, just really thirty seconds, just how, how is it going out there with the, um, construction? I know you're out there because you're doing the nine-one-one stuff. Um, how's the project going out there with our public safety building?
So it's looking a lot better these last few days. Um, we just ordered fiber through AT&T and Spectrum ran their fiber into the building. Unfortunately, we did have to push our nine-one-one move over date to June seventeenth. But that being, should be, everybody's in the building and we are cutting the nine-one-one phones over on June seventeenth. So I'm very confident that we will make that date and we will be moved in well before that. We just won't move the nine-one-one phones until the seventeenth, but it is actually starting to look like a very nice building and ready for people to move in soon.
Great, alright, um, good to hear, thank you for that, I really just wanted, and we can all follow up and go look at it, and certainly I know there's gonna be a lot of follow-up next month as we really start putting our into that new, new, new building, and very exciting. So thank you for that. Um, that does bring us to the end of our agenda. And with that, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna zoom over to you and let you take the mantle from here with any comments or announcements.
Thank you, Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yep.
So y'all all look great, it seems like forever since we've seen each other. Um, good meeting tonight, thank you. Uh, I'll, I'll just say that, um, I, I know, I've had some questions about financials. I know Robert, Melody, myself were watching those. Obviously, we have some businesses suffering, but, um, the Walmarts, the Sams, the Lowe's, and even Piggly Wiggly's of the world are, are, um, up in volume, let's say. Uh, so hopefully, our, our prayer's gonna be that we come out of this not as we were expecting. Uh, and Melody was right, in the very beginning, we, uh, simply asked the department heads and reminded them that just something was in the budget, we needed to go ahead and, and spend it. Uh, just simply not knowing exactly, come out of this and for how long. Um, and then, um, I, I like y'all, the interest Governor has to say, uh, tomorrow. But I'm also interested to see what our health professionals say. Um, so we'll see what comes out of that meeting. And I'm sure y'all know, we've got a little weather, I think, coming in on Wednesday. JJ's always really good to hop on conference calls with the weather service to keep us informed. So if anything major, we'll, we'll certainly let you know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I may, I may put you on the spot just a second here, just, um, because I know we've had, you know, unprecedented times thrust upon us and, um, we certainly have a rainy day fund there for our support and, uh, but right now, we haven't tapped into it, we haven't spent a penny of it, and we certainly haven't exhausted, um, and I just wanted to make, if you could elaborate on that.
Well, I'll reiterate what you say. Um, a lot of people love to take, um, advantage of times like this and, um, just say very uneducated things, so let me just leave it at that. So that fund was in place, uh, nothing will happen to that fund, uh, about the full council, that's the way that was set up. Uh, so the rumors of this rainy day fund being depleted and it's on and all that is, um, uh, really a waste of time to even discuss.
And thank you for that, I just wanted that clarified, so I didn't mean to waste more time, I, but I did want to clarify while we had the opportunity and, uh.
It's important, some people don't wanna hear that, but, but they can hear it, it's okay.
It, we, we are, we are, and we're continued, we're financially strong, D and B financially strong. We're gonna get through all this and we will get more information in the coming months and we're gonna all wrap arms around it and deal with it and certainly fully inform the public properly and accurately. as to where we stand. But at this point, we, we frankly, I think as a city and the man I think is echoing this is that we, we feel a little comfortable and blessed with where we think we stand, perhaps really blessed compared to other communities. So I'll leave it at that. I don't want to blow it up too much. I just wanted to take an opportunity since you touched on that, Mayor, so thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, Mr. Waltney.
Just two things, you know, my typical thanks to all the city employees for making it seem seamless to us and also Public Works for enduring what seems to be everybody's incessant yard work and cleaning out their crawl spaces. I know I've done my fair share. But thanks to all the city employees that make this seem seamless to us. So Melody and Robert, you know, Chief Hill, thank you all. We appreciate what you do. And I just drew a blank on my last comment. Oh, looking forward to seeing everybody in person next week. Smiling faces. Video's nice, but face-to-face is better.
Thanks, Andy. And I'm going to keep my fingers crossed for that, so.
Yeah, right. That's true, true.
Are you sending?
Are you sending public works, Mr. Waltney?
Oh, yeah, public works. Thank y'all.
Oh, that's assuming we're allowed to meet, right? So we'll just V eight, or we'll make changes if we need to?
Yes, I mean, we're, we're going to try to meet, we're going to have committee meetings.
Okay, whether it's Zoom or in-person, gotcha.
Or if it's going to be a spread out in-person.
Mr. Jones, how much do you think you'll need? I assume you'll be at five P M.
Yeah, we have the mid-year review. We're, we're probably going to need forty-five minutes because of the mid-year review.
Okay, I will set Public Works for five forty-five for thirty minutes. I think that's quite a few items on the agenda right now.
Great, thank you, Mr. Waltney. And Mr. Thames? Melody, I apologize, I can't remember. The public hearing we have set for the rezoning on Central, has that item been moved out of P and D? Do you know?
You're talking about the, for the, the building construction on the C one C, is that what?
Right, the Catholic basis.
Oh, the Catholic basis, let's see. Hold on one second.
Well, she's looking, just the thanks to all our city services and everybody. It's, it's a great thing to continue and just continue supporting all our local businesses and supporting those of us that are now having to homeschool our children. Yes.
Amen to that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I just, I will not call P and D unless we need to discuss the rezone. I, I just can't recall if we've moved it out of council or committee. It's come out.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see, let me, I'm kind of having a hard time minimizing the Zoom to get to my, to get to where my P and D agenda is, I got set on, but on March sixteenth, I, I didn't see on your P and D, I didn't see it. See it on there, but I have to try to find it.
Okay.
Well, okay, here it is. I'm sorry, I found it on the second page. On March sixteenth, it says y'all met, voted four to zero to refer to full council without recommendation pending the public hearing.
Okay, perfect. Well, then, so no P and D. All right, thank you then. All right. Mr. Hickenbottom.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. I'm going to be brief and just say what's already been said. Thank all of our city employees or govern above and beyond the call of duty in many cases out there. And just would encourage all of our neighbors to keep doing what you're doing, keep producing those numbers and everybody's trying to stay safe.
Right, thank you, Mr. Hickenbottom. And Mr. Wolverton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to reiterate, if you can, continue to support local restaurants while they're up and running and once businesses are back open, try to do the same, same there. And I think just as a, as a good reminder, Trista read something about this time kind of being dubbed the great pause. So you know, there's, there's certainly some real negative things in terms of business loss and financial hurt and, and things that are going on, but in some ways, you know, it's given us an opportunity to spend more time with family and connect with friends and people that we might have lost touch with or not been keeping the best contact with. So kind of a reminder that, that we can continue to take this time and make a lot of savings. And I think my knowledge Homewood does that as a community. I know that our neighbor came over yesterday and her elderly mother had seemingly misplaced or had her cane taken and my wife put up something on social, social media and within, you know, within five, ten minutes had neighbors that were bringing over canes. So, you know, I, I know that that community feel is, is even tighter within each neighborhood that we live in. And I'm just thankful that we are here. And I want to thank Berkeley and, and Public Works again for continuing to, to run all the services that we, we need to keep the city running and keeping the trail. I know it's probably flooded several times, two or three times with all the rain since we've been under quarantine. But they've done a good job of, of getting it cleaned back up and, and usable again. And I know my family personally has, has been able to enjoy it for that reason. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolverton. And Mr. McCluskey.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Again, I, I won't go into a lot of the detail, but thanks to all the, the city employees and of course, all the citizens of Homewood for, for everything that they're doing right now. I will set, Mr. Waltney, did you say thirty minutes?
I did, but look, I was going to mention, looking back at the agenda, let's knock it down to fifteen.
Fifteen.
Six.
Okay, all right, well, then I'll do, I'll do six and Barry, I'll only need fifteen minutes as well.
Okay.
So, and that's, and that's for public safety. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McCluskey. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, finance at five and we'll be doing the mid-year review. And, and as the mayor and Mr. Wright mentioned, I mean, our, our financial situation is, is really good in, in light of, you know, the fact of how many unemployed there are in the country. And I hope we're on the backside of, of all of this. I, I feel very confident from the very first time we were on that conference call with, with all the mayors of Jefferson County and the Jefferson County Health Officer and all that, and, and all those projections were, were, were not correct. I mean, they were about ninety-seven percent off, but, but I feel so good about kind of where, where we are in, in getting out of this. So I, I hope we're out soon and I look forward to seeing all of you very soon. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And Mrs. Smith?
First, I would like to just say to Jennifer how sorry I am about the loss of her grandmother. I knew how much she loved her grandmother. So I'm, Jennifer, I've been thinking about you a lot. So just know that you got lots of people praying for you and your family.
Keith's grandmother passed away the next day. I don't know if you knew that or not.
Oh, no, I didn't know she passed away. I knew she had the stroke, but I didn't realize she passed away too. I'm so sorry. Again, so prayers for everybody over there at the Andres house. And then today Jennifer and I received an email from Sherry Nielsen, who is our contact at the census. And apparently the census, they suspended all their field work and efforts on March sixteenth and are probably not going to get back to that until June first. So they are petitioning Congress for an extension on the census, actually. So if all of y'all can convince and, you know, just suggest to your, your friends and your neighbors and your families to go ahead if they haven't already completed that census and do it. Homewood has been running ahead of the state average for responses, which is great, but we still have a pretty good ways to go before we hit where we need to be. So just, you know, remind people that that's still a very important thing. And when all of this is over, we really, we definitely need to still have our congressional representatives representing us in Washington. So we need to, we need to stay on top of that. And I will set special issues for six fifteen. And I guess I'm the last one, so it doesn't matter when I finish, but there you go.
Unlimited.
Yes, unlimited time. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Smith. Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you. Good job again, Mr. Wright, in a difficult situation. We appreciate you, you working through all of this. And I'll be brief, just, it's great, it's great to see everybody and everyone stay safe. Thank you to all our city workers and other frontline workers for everything that you're doing to keep us all safe and look forward to seeing everyone in person soon.
Fingers crossed. Thank you, sir. Ms. Andres?
Yeah, I was going to just add to what Mrs. Smith mentioned about the census. Because the field workers are not going to be out there right now, we're really wanting to maximize sort of the higher impact areas. So that includes us. So if you can challenge, like she said, you know, if you have any spheres of influence, whether it's your church small group or your tennis team or your employees or your coworkers or whatever way you can engage some of those people and have a little challenge with your team to have a hundred percent participation, just some ideas, some fun ideas to sort of engage folks because we really want to drive these numbers since our field numbers are hard to reach areas are going to be even harder to reach. I think I'll, I'll tell you that in my leadership Birmingham class, Nikki Lim, who is with Big Communications who Adeka hired to do the marketing, you're going to see a pullback on local advertising for the census right now because we're having to stretch those dollars, like Barry said, into October. So you're going to see a pullback on the local messaging and, and don't let that, you know, stay engaged and keep that going because the national advertising will come in, but you're not, you're going to, you're going to see a little lull in local advertising right now. So just keep that in the front and foremost of your mind. I'll give you a quick update on the crosswalk at the Marriott. We are so, ever so close. I think they are going to be striping this week. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Oh, my gosh, for three years worth of work on this project, even up into Friday, I, I got to finally talk with someone at Aldott about taking the Kiwanis check and processing that as a memorial. So we're working on that right now and getting David Faulkner involved. But we should see the striping on that this week and then Aldott requires a fourteen-day stay until they open it. So it'll be a fourteen-day lag until they open it again. But I've used it a couple of times without the light and without the striping and to get on the sidewalk and go coming across from O'Henry's. So it's going to be fantastic. I'm so thrilled about it. So just wanted to let y'all know about that. And my grandmother was with me, with all of us when we were all sworn in. So yes, she was almost ninety-four years old, but she was such a wonderful person and I'm going to miss her and I thank you, Barry, for that. And like I said, she was, just that night when we were all sworn in and she was able to be there, I will never forget that night. So anyway.
We're all hugging you right now, just so you know.
She, she, every one of you that got through.
I remember that, I remember that night because she was part of your team.
That's right.
That's how glad our family were just very strange, competitive and weird.
All right, Mr. Harden?
Well, we all, as Barry Smith said, we keeping Jennifer and Keith in our prayers. That's really tough to have both of them one day after the other. So that's tough. I do want to thank Ms. Smith for doing my job for me, even though apparently it was a little lighter job than normal. I am willing to do that job. I just need someone to tell me when and how on, on keeping up with all those, all the money we've got to spend. I, I don't know if you guys noticed that, that Mama Goldsberg's has shut down basically, I don't know everywhere, but certainly I think three places in Birmingham. And the only place they've kept open is Homewood. So, so I think that's a good sign for us. Sometimes it's how much rent they're paying. We, I don't, I don't really know what it is, but clearly they liked downtown Homewood, felt like they wanted to keep that one going. And I thought that was a great sign for us and, and our city for them to say the only one we're going to keep open was Homewood. But all of these folks are all going to need our money as soon as we can give it to them. It's going to be tough for, for a while, I think. And including, as y'all have heard, a couple of you heard from me, I think we're going to have some, some shortages at some point and, and collections from our taxes and stuff, but let's just see where that takes us. The good news is, is that all the, you guys and all the folks before you, we've, we've, we've always had a surplus. So we are in a really good financial position and I appreciate all you guys for that.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Harden. Let me begin first of all by, I'm going to give the prize to Mr. Wyatt for the best background for his sunlight and tree. I know you.
That's right.
All day.
I have. I tried out a bunch of different spots around the house. This one won.
Have a wall and lamps behind me. So well, we'll continue to compete if we have to continue to do this, but I'll send you your ribbon in the mail. Let me echo just really a couple of y'all very quickly, you know, just really do want to pass on, you know, for the mayor and, and others to pass on to our city workers our, our sincere gratitude, both as council members and as residents for from day one, continuing to pick up the trash, you know, continuing public safety and certainly continuing our fire safety and, and all the other aspects of our, our city and, and, and thank, thank them for that. As I said last meeting, even through a lot of uncertain times that, that we've all been going through. And with that, we have more uncertainty and just to let everyone remain vigilant and to be wary this week as we, we manage what we hear from the state and from the governor's office and what we hear from our local health officials so that we can all make good decisions for our city. And I know the mayor is going to help us with that and stay on top of that. And again, I'll be communicating with everyone as much as we can and looking forward to hearing from everyone as, as well as we, we weigh the decisions of, of our governor and our, and our local health officials going forward for for easing back into, to business and life perhaps. So everyone hang in there so that we can make those decisions. I don't know what they're going to be right now. I don't know if anybody truly does. And they vary from state to state. So there's no real true guidepost yet. So everybody stay tuned. This is going to be an important week, this week as we make those decisions. And with those decisions, as I said, we're going to have committee meetings on Monday, council meetings next week. And I will let everyone know as to whether we're going to continue to communicate with everyone through looking at Alex's background or what it's going to be, but it really is nice to see everyone even through this Zoom technology. But I certainly hope we can get together and we'll try to make those decisions and certainly we'll be garnering all of your thoughts as well. And just as I leave, I just want to also say a thank you to Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Andres for continuing to keep your nose to the grindstone on that census stuff. Thank y'all for that. I know it's important and you guys are just, you're just troopers on taking that cause on and have been doing it every single week, including through all of this crisis we're going through. So hats off to you two and just.
And Barry went out and physically put the banners up herself and then went back to make sure you could see it perfectly. Barry's had a lot of physical labor, so.
I'm the muscle in this group.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Yeah, Mr. Waltney, did you have something?
I was going to say, don't forget Brian. He, Brian Wells, he's been doing a wonderful job, keeping all the Zoom bombers out of our meeting. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, guys. Hang in there for thirty more seconds because we, we, we come to this world and nobody knows how to do any of this. Now, some of you perhaps did. I will assure you, I didn't. And all we do is we pick up the phone, we call Brian, he tells us which buttons to push and, and he does it not only for us, but for our whole community. And Brian, I know I've, I've just expressed my gratitude to you before, but it's just times like these that you're just, we're, we're just so lucky and grateful to have you and just thank you for what you're doing for our city and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
And with that positive note, we're going to enter in the meeting. Look forward to hopefully seeing you guys in some shape, form or fashion for committee meetings. Everyone stay posted. We'll be in touch this week. Until then, see you guys soon.
If not, next time, best costume.
Good night.
I have no, I dropped my headset. I don't know why this was laying next to my desk. I have to ask my children. I literally looked over and saw this. There's a purple wig laying next to my desk. Those are the beard.
I think you need a haircut and, and.
I need both.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.